I'll call this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal civil, liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Thank you all for being here. We're gonna move right along. 4.01, this is the point in the meeting for comments on matters not already on the agenda. Comments on agenda items will be accepted when that comes up during the meeting. Interests versus vouches will submit views in written form to the clerk or superintendent prior to the meeting and those comments will be brought to the attention of the board during the meeting. Do we have any public comment or communication? Yeah?
Yeah, hey, I just, hopefully I'm early enough that we haven't hired a basketball coach yet through the boys program because I missed some of the meetings and I looked back through the meetings, the board that two minutes last night just to think we might have had them or something. But going through last year was, I've been part of basketball for like 50 years, literally, and I've never experienced the devastation that we experienced last year at any level ever and the, and the kids, it's really, really hard. I don't work with kids for six weeks this last summer and just getting them back to a place of confidence and having a chance to redeem themselves was really, really challenging because when you go through a season like we did last year where you don't have the experience that coaches had experienced, it is really, really devastating. And I hope that when the next coach is hired, when we make sure that coach has varsity boys' basketball experience and then you take the time to really do what's best for our kids because our kids don't deserve what they put their experience last year and our community deserves better. And I think you guys are capable of making that kind of decision to bring a good person in here and get a good person to do that job. Thank you.
Any other public comment or correspondence? Okay. With that. 6.01, send agenda.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Okay, motion second. Who's that under the vote? Tiff?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Sabrina?
Hi.
Aye. Governance calendar, 7.01.
So for September, we had action for Hunter's safety but we have not received any requests to host that yet so we do not put that on the agenda.
And we won't be either going forward, so.
They're using a different facility?
Yeah, I talked over the weekend.
Perfect.
Yep.
They're using City Hall now, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Correct.
And then you wanted to talk about the district tours?
I did. So instead of having our administrators explain to us five different times, I'm just gonna have, uh, I think Tiff, you spend quite a bit of time at elementary school volunteering. Let's hoping you could get Mr. Bailey and then possibly at the work session, just fill us in what he has to do. Wade and I are in the middle of getting a quote from another concrete company so I think Wade and I'll just stick with you unless you, if that's alright with you. And then I was hoping maybe you guys could get with Robin and whatnot and then anytime any of you guys get a chance to get Robert here, of course, to end that a little bit too.
Okay.
So if that works.
By the next meeting, by the work session?
I'd like to.
Okay.
So I think throughout the year, all of us are gonna be in all the facilities but like I said, I just don't feel like you guys need to repeat yourself five times on facility things. So if that's alright with you, that's, I think, yeah, we'll do it. I didn't care, so, okay.
I think that'd be amazing.
What, you don't like repeating?
I mean, I like seeing everybody.
We'll be there for other reasons.
Alright, and hopefully that guy gets back to Wayne there, so. Okay, moving on, little business, 8.01. Robert?
So I reached out to Reliable Auto, I'm Agent Systems, and got a quote from them to basically do the same thing that ETS was doing. Came back pretty decently lower. And when comparing the service they would offer, it was fairly comparable as to ETS. So, and their sister company's Midland Mechanicals, so. And they have guys that usually work for ETS there. That's what I know our systems and our buildings.
Second.
So $12,950 annually compared to $19,000? And then there's some things that have to be changed out?
Yeah, but ETS is gonna have to do some of that too.
Okay.
With like updating the program and all that stuff, so. When they do this, they've got that all built into this pricing, so.
So either way, we'd have to do that? Okay. I think it looks good if you feel comfortable using that company?
I'm confident in a couple of guys that I know that work there that we'll be dealing with.
Okay. So it's $6,146 savings a year?
A year.
I think that's a lot easier to swallow than $19,000 a year.
Our house train's a good company, but they're expensive. They are. They're, they're your top tier, so. I, I agree, these guys are.
And this is a local company.
Right. I'm good with that.
Things good to check.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
And this, and we have already had this budgeted in, correct? Yeah. Okay, perfect.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the proposal from Reliable Automation Systems with the specified contract years as presented. Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item?
Does that mean they're gonna come in and check the air conditioning? My room still doesn't have air conditioning. There's no airflow.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sure once we get them tied down to the contract, then we can get them in.
Okay.
So.
Because it's been, what, seven years that I've been wanting airflow? And I already told Robin, I'm gonna ask my doctor for a doctor's note because he and me do not mix well. So I have three fans blocking my room right now.
Well, they just upgraded the wall seat like two years ago.
It's like a sauna.
Well, tomorrow we'll get them, get them on phone. Alright. Any further board discussion? Tiff?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Sabrina?
Hi.
Aye. Okay. Carpet update.
So I got a couple of quotes from Billings Water Damage and Restoration. I have them do the newest one for the three rooms that we are currently looking at replacing carpet and the future ones. And that one came back at like $33,674 but it would take between the two 12 days to remediate so it would be something we'd have to wait till next summer to do. If we wanted to do all eight rooms. Also have them do one for just the three rooms in question that we're trying to do the carpet in and that was $13,400, about five days but as soon as that's mediated, we'd have to get the carpet company in here to fully carpet. And I don't think Christmas break is long enough to do that. But, I mean, we can see what the carpet guys say as far as installation. I don't think they work weekends, but maybe they would do something special for us, I don't know.
Cause there's asbestos?
Yes.
Under all of those rooms?
Yep.
There is?
Underneath the tile.
Under the?
When they pulled it up.
Under the?
The tile, not the bit.
Yeah.
Not the carpet.
Not the carpet, yeah. And you can't just pull the carpet up without disturbing the tile?
No, it was, they started writing the doorways and that tile was coming up to the carpet, so.
Okay.
We also talked about a solution too with the wood flooring later on top of that. Did you find out anything about that? With the price comparison to?
It'd be about the same amount.
Remediating?
Well, we did it. We did the remediation, but it's still roughly about the same price as carpet.
Which, without the remediation piece to it?
So it would be quicker?
Quicker and cheaper. It would be $33,000 for the remediation.
Do we have a quote on the, the wood? Where are you, where are you? So you're saying it would be like a wood?
Like laminate.
A laminate?
Like a laminate floor that would go straight on top of the carpet that's in there, which you can do.
Okay.
It has to be that whole pile like that in there to be able to do it.
And then you would put carpet on top of that or just leave it at the laminate?
Just leave it with the laminate floor and just lay it right on top and you don't have to disturb any of the flooring and you don't have to go through the remediation either.
Okay.
As long as it's covered, it's fine. It's like you're, you cover it as long as it doesn't get, where it can get broken or everything, everything remediation, so.
Well, this one's not an actionable, actionable item, so I would like to see a, yeah. Let's get a quote on that anyway. Just see if we can do, just go over it about that.
And to see how fast they could do that so we could get those rooms in working order again.
No, I think that, I think that that would be worthwhile to be able to do something like that damage. Just laying it right on top, not having to pull all that up and.
Cause that's the whole thing, as long as you.
Right.
You just go on top of it.
Yep.
Once you start pulling it, you gotta pull it on.
And you're gonna do the entire process with it.
And then they all, you do all that stuff, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's get a quote on that too. And we'll just take a look at it. If you can get that. Well, it doesn't matter, just, when you get it, when you get it, just get it to Scott and we'll get it on. On the agendas.
Will it?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Robert.
Okay. Moving on to new business, 9.01, Presentations, this is for information purposes.
Ellen Dendelke?
Yes.
I'm planning to talk about our bus situation with the work session?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Okay, cause I was just gonna say, this makes me really nervous.
It does.
Really concerning.
I wanna give everybody some time, we're gonna.
You nervous?
We're gonna talk about this in the work session, so.
Okay. Next, next work session?
Mm-hmm.
In two weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I don't wanna get into a whole lot of it tonight, but we need to let our community know that there's gonna probably have to be some changes, so.
Can we, can we make it two weeks?
Ex- to this week?
Yes. With, with a lot of help and there have been all hands on deck saying that they will help us, you know, cause they understand it's an emergency. As long as it doesn't become our operating team, right? That we are actively trying to find a solution.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to give them some time. I don't want to jump to anything.
Yep.
So, okay.
Yeah, it's.
It's gonna be fun.
Yep. And it's not just you keeping up tonight.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
9.01 to affiliate, Mr. DuSole?
I would take great pleasure in recommending Katie Stover as a district bus monitor and would ask that the board, as she has been working as a volunteer since the 28th of August, that we would backdate her accordingly. Cause she has been doing that and she is an elderly person on fixed income and every penny she can get help.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Katie Stover as district bus monitor for the 24-25 school year as well as back pay to 8-28-24. Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Go ahead.
Yeah, Katie was our bus monitor since she was little guy. He's graduating now. I think he's been at home, posted up often, and she is amazing, loves the kids, real love.
Nice, I have her back.
Yeah, so back pays. Yeah, do it.
Any further board? Tiff?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Sabrina?
Hi.
Aye. 9.03?
Okay, I've got three substitute hires to recommend. Gracie Gillian, Rosemary McTaggart, and Tasha Miller.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves hiring Gracie Gilliland, Rosemary McTaggart, and Tasha Miller as district substitutes for the 24-25 school year. Okay.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item?
Great people. You guys are doing a great job hiring really good people, I need you to know that. These are great people.
Any further board? Andy?
Hi.
Tiff?
Hi.
Sabrina?
Hi.
Aye. Very good. 9.04. Mr. DuSole?
Do you want me to do concessions, all three? Okay. I would like to recommend Brenda Menahan for Colchester High School Fall, Winter, and Spring concessions.
Okay. I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Brenda Menahan for CHS Fall, Winter, and Spring concessions for the 24-25 school year. Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Tiff?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Sabrina?
Hi.
Aye.
I would also like to recommend Crystal Cox as Colchester High School BPA assistant sponsor.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Crystal Cox, CHS BPA assistant sponsor for the 24-25 school year.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Tiff?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Sabrina?
Hi.
Aye.
And finally, just wanna take a little aside. If you've had a chance to see the football team in action yet this year, they are making steps forward. Yeah, we, we were holding Columbus who beat us 60-something to nothing last year, uh, to seven to nothing until end of the fourth quarter. Boys just ran out of gas, but they're on the right track and it's a good thing to see. So it takes me great pleasure in recommending Nathan Goodluck as Colchester High School Football Assistant Coach.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Nathan Goodluck, CHS Football Assistant Coach for the 24-25 school year. Second.
Okay, I have a motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Angie?
Hi.
Tiff?
Hi.
Sabrina?
Hi.
Aye. Gaming club, extracurricular fund. Mr. DuSole?
Okay, so I would like to create a extracurricular fund for the gaming club. Uh, there are expenses that, expenses that are unique to them and they will be collecting monies to pay for those things, online programs. There's some games that they need to get and some consoles that they need to buy and some equipment. Um, by the way, still cheaper than putting on one football game. But, uh, but they, they are gonna need things that are specific to them so I'd like to be able to create that account so that we have a way of seeing that they're getting what they need.
Are they gonna be doing like fundraisers or?
Hopefully.
How are they gonna do, collect their funds?
Um, hopefully they will be doing some fundraisers. We're still getting them off the ground and figuring out what they have to do to compete. But, um, so it, from the looks of it, they're gonna operate part of the year while they're in season as, you know, competitive sport. And then the remainder of the year, they'll operate as a club. So it's kind of a dual thing. It's an MHSA, like, they're not, there's no rules right now about it. Um, so I think MHSA is kinda looking at it and seeing how it's implemented. There is a company that's overseeing it for them and, and they can determine which games they're gonna compete in and things like that. So, yeah, they should be doing some fundraising to, to help offset their costs.
They're also on grants.
Okay.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves opening a new extracurricular fund for the CHS Gaming Club in the activity accounts. Okay.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item?
Yeah, I, I know you guys approve the gaming club, but I am so adequately opposed to it. Watching what kids, how, how they develop. To me, it's, if you can wait for 21, to play games is like any other kind of thing to get young and big to deal. They can develop habits that are more healthy than sitting in front of a console. I know there's social interaction and all that, but as a parent, watching my generation and my children's generation of kids and the negative impact that excessive gaming has on kids, I just really encourage you to be cautious as leaders in our school. And you can be very, very aware that there's a lot of inherent concerns with sitting in front of a TV, console, just doing that, not moving your body. So you're 21, wait, just wait. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Any further board? Tiff?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Sabrina?
Hi.
Aye. Bus driver substitute rate.
Alright, so it's difficult to hire bus drivers, so substitute route bus driver rate change. Uh, recommendations from $17 to $25. Substitute activity bus driver time change, rate time change from $1,250 to $1,250, sorry. And then the activity bus driver sit time rate is $1,250 excluding coaches and sponsors. So they're already on clock.
Okay.
So that's their recommendations.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves increasing the route substitute bus driver rate to $25. Substitute activity route driver to $25 with $1,250 for sit time excluding coaches and sponsors. Okay.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Terry? Sorry.
So, in the last part where you're excluding coaches and sponsors from the $1,250, are you then including them in the rate change of 25?
Yes, if they have to drive the bus.
Are they driving a big bus or a what?
Either one.
Either one.
If they're driving, they get the driver rate that they can get paid for the sit time because they're already getting paid to coach and that would be double difference here.
Okay, there is one different round?
Yep.
Now, do they get paid door to door or they get paid from their, if their leave time is before 8 o'clock up until 8 o'clock and then for 4 o'clock after? That's how it has been in the past. If a coach or a sponsor who is already getting paid as a coach or sponsor drove a bus, they only get paid before and after?
Yeah, they get paid the time they're driving the bus. So if they have to do a pre-trip, they get paid for that. They get paid to drive the bus to the event. They would get paid to drive the bus home, but as soon as they get to the school where they would be normally coaching.
I think what she's asking is if it's a certified teacher who's already getting paid 8 to 4 to teach a class, then they only get their bus driving time before 8 o'clock and then after 4, that's what she's saying. So if it's an employee of ours that's salary, kinda changes.
Well, I think it needs to be like an extra stipend then because they're doing extra duties and we really, really need them to drive those buses. So if we need to set it up as an extra stipend, I think that's what I would prefer we do. But they should get paid to drive that bus. That's how I feel.
How would you set that up? They would be paid to be teaching and driving a bus?
Teachers are on salary, so they're not paid hourly.
Oh, right.
So they get their salary, but we're not gonna cut them their salary short because they have to jump on a bus and drive. So I think if they're, if we're asking them to drive a bus because we don't have a bus driver available, then they should get $25 an hour to drive that bus.
Can you work around the salary and do that or is that considered double difting?
I refer to you on this side of the business because.
It might be a certain.
No, it's double difting.
I think.
That's not. I don't wanna get ourselves in trouble, but I wanna make sure we have bus drivers, yeah.
Well, can we just? Like, is it something where we could, if they are like a certified teacher unless? They probably make more than $25 a day. Where it's a, I think the difference is, so like if a coach, if you have a teacher that's coaching and they leave at noon to go coach football game, they're still getting paid till 4, plus they're coaching, but it's a stipend. So I think where this differs is that it's hourly.
But if they're operating the bus, then that's a separate job that's not coaching and not teaching.
But I don't think you can do their salary and pay them hourly during their 8 to 4.
You could do their salary and give them a stipend.
Yeah.
Could we just pay it out and it's a stipend?
For, for now?
How would you figure that out?
How would you figure the stipend out?
It would just be the normal hours. So say I drive my team to Billings. I'm a teacher, I drive my team to Billings. $200 stipend I would get for that trip.
How many, how would you know how many activities they're going to be doing? You would have to be, you'd have to set the stipend amount up.
I would, no, I would set the stipend amount based on where they were driving and how many hours they'd be on the bus.
Is it paid out when they receive their coaching stipend?
Not, you need to do it.
Not every two weeks, like they would if they were driving. Yeah, but then how would you, how would you set that stipend up to? Like, how would you, how would you just set it up as like bus driver stipend? Or teacher, bus driver stipend?
Yeah, I would have to ask some questions and make sure we can do it, but.
It's tricky because I, I'm on a stipend at work and I have to log all my hours outside of work. You can't pay that stipend because then it's double dipping.
Right.
So it is tricky, but you can do it, but I would just have to make sure you're not crossing, oh, because that's bad. Yeah.
Right.
It's bad, I don't know what it.
Yeah, so. And we weren't in trouble before because it was outside of their 8 to 4. If they taught, they only claimed those hours outside of it.
That's easy, yeah.
So.
Return trip would be outside, more than likely, for hours.
We could run into it during the day, I see what you're saying, yeah. You got a day, you leave at 8, you're.
Well, let's get some clarification, because the biggest, the biggest problem right now is are we gonna have people to drive those buses?
Right.
Yeah.
Can we, can we couches and sponsors?
Yeah, can we improve this now so that those people can get paid until we figure that out? Is there, can we? Yeah, just so, I think you just, you would just.
Yeah, because, I mean, we currently have, like, the activity bus every evening is driven by someone who's technically a substitute driver.
Right.
And, you know, and it would be nice for him to get paid to 25 and he's also driving considerably for us for activities in the times that he's allowed to. So like, one of the things I was gonna also ask is if, for some reason, if we could possibly consider uh, making this retroactive for the drivers that we have that are sub-drivers. Doing this for the beginning of the year, because again.
This, this right here is to help with that other problem we were talking about a little bit earlier, obviously, right? But I guess I didn't think about teachers
Yeah.
having to possibly drive, say, they have to leave at 2.
Mine is bring it up to cover the problem. I just, I remember how many of my emails, I know.
No, it's good, I didn't think about that.
We had an issue and I remember Joanne looked into it and there was a reason that she told us we couldn't do that.
Like I said, the reason that Sabrina and I had this conversation with, with Scott was we gotta do something right now and this is something we can do right now.
Right.
So, but I, I guess I didn't, I didn't even get to.
I mean, currently we have three substitute drivers and two.
Yes, well, we could approve this as is because if you already had that in place with your certified staff, just keep doing what you were doing. We can look into it and that can be brought back if we can offer them a stipend.
Okay, so it's from 8 to.
Eight to 4.
With 8 to 4.
4, 8, after 4.
Keep doing what you were doing until we can find more information. But as of right now, we can approve this for as it is.
Right.
Cause it's just changing the rates that we already had in place. But just don't change your process until we know more.
Okay.
Are you okay with that, Terry?
Um, is it okay to, I don't, we didn't hear the answer for the retro because I was, I'm enjoying.
It wasn't a part of the proposal.
It wasn't a part of the proposal.
Because we put this up, like, from the last meeting, we were going to talk about it at the last one session, but I got the, so this.
My thoughts is we keep bus drivers and get bus drivers, I don't care.
I know, I'd be fine with it.
I'll find one too.
If you can do it according to your roles, it probably hasn't been that many, going at school for two and a half weeks.
Right.
As far as money, it's a matter of.
Yeah, we're not talking.
Procedure.
Huge amount of funds here, so I'm fine with it.
Did we already have a second?
Yes.
Oh, now you have to amend it.
I amend my motion to include retroactive pay for any substitute bus drivers who've been driving since school started.
Thank you. I think that sends the right message as far as.
Well, hopefully it encourages some of the people that drive buses.
Yeah, we've been waiting to put it out there for this to increase to be like, hey, look at this.
Yeah, because I haven't seen some more.
We're going to do a new banner down for the fence because everyone's looking kind of wrong, but.
Correct.
And, I guess I'll bring this up now, but I don't know if anybody's noticed, as you drive into Billings, just past Johnson Lane, there's a billboard. And I'm going to call and talk to Glenn at Lockwood, but they took Uncle Sam and it's, instead of we want you, it's we need you.
I saw, yeah.
Teachers, substitutes, bus drivers, and put up a big billboard and I wanted to ask her if we could use the same idea. Because it was cute, it kind of caught your eye.
They were not the only ones hurting.
No, yeah, who's, it's everywhere.
Does it need a second?
You need a second. Angie, second. Okay. Any further public comment on this agenda item?
Yeah, this, just for people's thought, as you guys kind of hashed this out for coaches. You know, like, in the years past, Joey Kelly had to drive for the divisional tournament and the state tournament, and they're on salary as well. And so that one year was to his will, to the state tournament, and then the divisional tournament was thankfully in Billings. But, so as you guys negotiate how to handle all that and how to figure out what the hours are that they're committed to, that they're committed to. And then the second thing is that with the early practices, Joe drove to Langier back, and Langier did the kids before school. And so that was no conflict at all. For the twenty-five dollars, it would have been wonderful. But, yeah, just know that tournament time, if the coaches have to drive, it's going to be, there's some crossover between them there.
Well, this is, this won't affect coaches that aren't certified teachers.
Oh, okay, okay. I just thought as coaches, Jim, I'm speaking.
Coaches will get that.
But classified coaches are on salary though. Because they are salary, they're not hourly. I just thought you were talking about salary versus, because all coaches are salary.
They get a stipend.
They get a stipend.
They get a stipend. They're not salary.
Oh, okay.
They're stipend employees.
No, they never got paid, neither do.
Any further board discussion? Tiffany?
Hi.
Angie?
Hi.
Serena?
Hi.
Nine point oh seven.
So, right now, we're going to be talking a little bit about the speech language path assistant pay. And what needs to happen is the district and association will agree to meet and negotiate the compensation for speech language path assistance. When certification requirements are established by the state in Montana, they will begin meeting within one month of the establishment of these requirements.
That was from our last negotiations, and now the state finally.
Has certification.
Has certification.
Oh, they do.
Yeah. So that's what this is saying, is that if a person has this, yeah, we got to discuss.
Yeah, there's a whole big.
All that pay is going to be.
There's a whole big thing on how you can be certified and what you have to do and what you return. You just need to get it into our CBA and discuss this. So I don't know, the work session, or if you want to, if you guys have a proposal eventually, or if it's something we need to.
I think, do we just open negotiations on that one item?
Okay, so because we're negotiating in this room anyway.
Yeah.
And so it's just basically putting a, it's just feel because they're already in the classification.
We just need to add a line to the matrix? Okay.
Thank you, I can do that. I think you and I should just start a meeting with.
Terry?
With Terry.
Okay. We'll just meet with you initially and then I can bring it.
When do we need to have this done?
I can't do it this week.
Okay, next week?
As long as it's not during the day, I'm the only person in the office next week.
It's very good.
We'll figure out time.
We'll figure out time.
A lot of, a lot of that, maybe.
It might, it might not be until after the second, the work session meeting, but we'll get it done. So.
And I feel like we can do it in an hour, you don't have to open negotiations unless you guys still don't know. If you're just adding a line to the matrix.
Right.
Then as soon as we do that, then we can post the position.
Do you want to send me those certification requirements? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll get that done. Ten point oh one, reports. Ms. Natcho here first.
Alright. Our year's off to a great start. We have one hundred and sixty students currently enrolled compared to one hundred and fifty-eight last year, one hundred and fifty-one all before. We had our open house on Wednesday, August twenty-first, had almost half of our students and parents attend for the high school. That's a huge number, so we were excited about that. We welcomed a number of new staff members this year. Kristy Morlock in English, Cherry Anderson in Math, Neil Grisbold in Industrial Arts, Joe Rock Library, Truce McMakea in PE and Health, Dana Strong in History, and Tara Lyon moved from Pine Butte to teach Chemistry at CHS. Trent Seal is joining us in the custodial department. Emily Vincent returned under emergency authorization teaching Title One, and Alicia Steers, Long Term Subteness and Ramsey's bathroom. We currently have one opening for a fair professional. I want to say thank you to student Aiman Needens for his work on the flower beds in front of the school. Notice he still has some park trips to finish on the end, but it looks very nice. He pulled a lot of weeds. And Tad also helped with that, so. Thank you to Robert and his crew for all their work on the grounds of the football field. Thank you to Tad, his summer crew, and the painting crew for all their work on the building over the summer. I think the building was ready the earliest and looked best it had this year in quite a while, so it was nice. Rosewood Treasure County Fair, we have lots of student artwork awards. Their artwork was phenomenal. I appreciate Mrs. Briggs and her hard work for getting all the projects entered. If you have a chance, they're upstairs in the display cases at the office and by the counseling office. FFA chapter also did well with their livestock projects, and Mr. Barrett did a great job of his first year. So, we started the year off on a positive note, having a couple of hiccups, but we're working hard to address tardies and dress code. Volleyball across country, off to a busy start. Completed our internet safety lessons during advisory last week as required by policy. Mr. Barrett and students hosted the FFA District Leadership Seminar on Thursday, September fifth. It's a great opportunity for kids to know, learn more about what FFA is all about. We hosted ten southeastern district FFA chapters and nearly two hundred FFA members and advisors. We had over a hundred and eighty students here in the auditorium, in the classrooms on that side of the building, in the mezzanine. And it was funny how many teachers came up and said, we had no idea there was that many kids. They just ran really, really smoothly to bed on all lunch. And they did a great job, so. And he did a great job planning that, so. Started our staff walking wellness challenge Tuesday, the third. The goal's fifteen minutes per day. Staff members can walk morning, afternoon, during their prep or lunch. Ten outside laps on the upstairs walking track equals one mile. And staff highlight each day they walk and fill in a log on the board in the workroom, and then this is any, hands out lots of reminders to us, so. We started planning for homecoming and getting started on Native American Week. We'll start math testing tomorrow here at CHS. College Fair is scheduled for Thursday, the twelfth, in the gym. Mrs. Davenport puts a huge amount of work into hosting that, and it's a really nice opportunity for our students. I think we have ten outside schools attending this year. So today was a busy day. We hosted Montana Repertory Theater this morning. Presentation was about Riley, a teenage science whiz who lives on a Montana ranch in the Mission Mountains. And she reads the book Frankenstein and is inspired to craft a DIY creature of her own. Monster and Farmer is about creation and connection in an increasingly digital world. It was fun. They did a great job. There's just two actors that come in and they have a set, and then they put on a workshop for the students that wanted to attend in the library. Mrs. Courier helps with that. We also hosted the Montana Chamber of Commerce today during advisory. Their presentation was part of our monthly college and career prep speakers. They talked a lot about the Department of Commerce and the Chamber and all of the programs and things they have going statewide and internationally. And presented some opportunities for some conferences that they will actually help pay for students to attend. We are having college and career readiness on Wednesdays. We started this last year, pushing it a little more this year. Staff and students wear college, technical, school, or military shirts in the tree. And staffs also are able to wear jeans if they wear that shirt. We've had a lot of participation so far, so that's been fun to see. Homecoming Week and Native American Week will be September twenty-third to twenty-eighth. Homecoming theme is heroes versus villains. Dress-up days, I believe, have been decided. Terry and I was working on the schedule today. We'll get that out hopefully tomorrow. Live touch pictures are scheduled for Tuesday, the seventeenth, not during Homecoming Week, so that's nice for a change. So we'll continue our partnership with Rosewood County Health Department and their Be a Buddy, Not a Foley, Kindness Matters program. The Seatbelt Save Wives program and the Aspen Nurse program. We'll continue our Student of the Month program for each grade level beginning the end of this month. If you happen by the cafeteria, you'll see the new kitchen gate curtain has been installed. It looks nice. Pool update, pool is open, classes are going, so. I wanted to just provide, I think, for the work session, we'll try to bring an off-sleet list. The major thing on that is that flooring up there to get some of that cleared out, however we can do that. And then I also wanted, I think I mentioned this, but I couldn't remember, that Mr. DeSole is completing part one of his administrative internship here at high school this semester, so. He'll be helping with some specific projects, helping with students, and spending time in classrooms, so. Jen's also doing ours, so I might just take the age off. I forgot that, that's supervisor part, so. Anyway, that's it. Anybody have any questions?
No, thank you very much. This is a tool.
So mine is respectfully submitted to you guys, but I can run through it really quick. Our attendance is a hundred and twenty right now, and we had open house as well, and it was very successful this year with only ten that didn't show up, so a hundred and ten of a hundred and twenty. So it was amazing. I just shout out to Stephanie from the food service, Terry for activities for being there in transportation, and then Chris came in to do the parent portal for the infant camp. So that just ran really smoothly in the cafeteria, and the parents had to sit down and fill out their paperwork and get everything turned in, so that was amazing. We have been working on all of our drills. We've done modified, we've done fire drill, and a lockdown has been completed so far, so we'll kind of continue with that pattern. Our star testing and both math and reading have been completed. We started math testing today, so you can see the dates that are there. We started with reading today. We'll hit math this week and language, and then the eighteenth we'll do science. We had our first cross-country meet in Harden and then our volleyball this past weekend at Joliet. That football game is on there, has been canceled. It's against Saint Le Brez, so apparently they don't have a season, so we won't have a football game this Thursday. Couple shout-outs that I've also included too on your packet to Shauna C. Cunningham and Aisley Olmstead. They both received materials for the classrooms after they applied to the donor's choice in accordance with Elsie Arson in the Montana OPI. So those are grants that they received, some material, so they did a really nice job on filling that out and getting that submitted, and so they have some things coming their way. Also included pictures of the before and after with the weight room with Malicia Segal. The dungeon, as we call it now, is completed. So it's amazing to be able to see the before and after pictures as you scroll through that. It's quite shocking. And the students and staff both are impressed with it and very excited to get in there, and so she has that as a rotation now as far as her PE. So we're very appreciative of all the effort that went into that from FM Creations, for all the wall wordage. Robert and his crew this last summer for extending it to ten feet out to the aux gym and finishing that up for us. There's just been a lot of people from CPRD that's donated bikes and Malicia, of course, and her family that's come up and extended their hands there too. So we're very thankful and thank you for allowing us to move forward with all of that. It's been, it's been a pleasure to see everyone so excited to bring that enthusiasm to Frank Ratten. The upcoming events, I've enclosed the schedules for volleyball, cross-country, and football. And I'm sure Mr. DeSole will speak to that at a different time. I do have on there the homecoming, and that's not happening at this time. We've canceled that, so we will not be participating in any of the homecoming, rough and tough, and/or the power puff. Do you have any questions?
Is your weight room open for students like before or after school?
We're currently working on that through the athletic, so we don't know what they're doing. We don't want to step on their toes. They have trainings and stuff in there too. But we are trying to allow students to come in under supervision of those adults and then also our own staff before or after school when it's available. So we're kind of working on incorporating that. We really like the philosophy of Lodge Grass when they have the capability of redoing their entire weight room too and just bringing in the community affairs. We wanted to tone it down just a tad bit and just make sure that our students and staff would be able to use that at this time. So we are working on allowing some of that participation in there.
Cool. That's really good.
Thank you.
Beautiful. I think I just want to start out by saying that we have an incredible staff at the elementary. Just have been so impressed with the work that is going on in there and the quality of teachers that you have in that building is amazing and it's commendable. We do have, our bucket filler program is up and running. We have some students that have done good deeds here and there. Marcus Sessions, Caleb Griffin, Grayson Moser, Bradley Drexler, Chris McTaggart, and Asia Keno Farmer, and Amelia Inglehart. It's a program where the students get notified. I think you all are aware of how that works. I really wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. DeSole for working out our blessing situation when we were getting students that were landing at school after the school day started. Just a bad deal all the way around, and he really went kind of above and beyond to make that happen. We have started our weekly PLC meetings in our building by grade level. We are currently working on developing a year-long context for staff, meaning what standards are you teaching where? And I've got about halfway through the staff at this point, working, working towards that. We're also doing it in conjunction with the curriculum consortium that we got signed up with the other day. And it was pretty fun because I looked in there and that's exactly my vision. I mean, that's what, it fits really well. And I, I don't know if Scott's going to talk about that a little bit later, but this year is their math adoption and world languages. And so I've kind of been pushing staff that I've met with to this point to start with math because then we can align with them and become familiar with their processes and how that all works. So that's going on, good fun, because it's right up my alley. It's what I love to do. Map testing started today, as is the rest of the district, pretty much getting started this week. We cut the fourth grade off and running. Current enrollment number is a little bit concerning, and K and two, we're pushing the limit, which is cool. I love it. It's great. The more the merrier. But if you're a kindergarten teacher, you're probably. Sorry, Janelle. I'm surprised. And, you know, we're all talking about these great things that happen. Probably the highlight so far in my years, we had the mighty toad rescue one year, and I don't know, or one, one more. I probably shouldn't go into it, but it turned into a pretty big event at the elementary, so. Anyway, we are moving and grooming and having a blast, so.
The mighty toad rescue?
Yeah, if you want to hear the story, I'll tell you later. Yeah, if you want to hear the story, I'll tell you later. Probably not from board appropriate, but anyway, that's all.
Is the toad alive?
Yes, it is. It's resting down in the creek. So, forget it. Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
So, I would like to thank the board for hiring a special ed staff. It's great to have six special ed teachers in our district. So, there's two in each building. We have an OT who's serving our district every other week, one day a week. And then our PT will be serving us one day a week every other week as well. And then our speech and language pathologist is in the district two days a week. And then our two school psychologists will come from the buildings area as needed. So, thank you, guys, for hiring those and supporting special education. We are starting to conduct evaluations and having IEP meetings. So, it was a slow, nice start, but now we're ramping up with all those. School nurses had a meeting on Tuesday, September 3rd. Preschool also started on September 3rd, and we increased that time from last year. So, we are providing that service Monday through Thursday for an hour. Thanks to Connie Mack for taking care of the preschool kids. Appreciate her in doing that. I'm going to the MK's conference on September 23rd and 24th in Bozeman to hear about the changes in special education. Reporting's going to be different. Monitoring's going to be different. The financial piece will be different because OSF has lots of things to tell Montana to improve on. And then there's always room for improvement, though. And our special education staff will meet on Thursday, September 27th. And then, looking ahead, I need to get posters out to do child find on October 24th. That'll be at the middle school from 12 to 4:00. And then I did forget, pre-ETS came to Colstrip and presented to some of our students. And pre-ETS is pre-employment transition services. Vocational Rehabilitation does that program, but they like to come into the schools and talk to kids because they don't just have to serve high school kids, but they can serve people after they leave high school and if anybody's struggling getting a job, interacting with a job. They do provide that support. So, the more times they're able to tell kids about that, the more they're likely to ask for help when they need it after high school. Any questions? Thank you.
Fall activities.
Okay, well, fall activities. So, what hasn't been gone over? We are, so looking forward to the middle school football season with the sixth graders added this year. Johnny has, last count, was 33. It might be up to 36 kids that he had adopted football, which is a really good thing to have. That speaks well towards, you know, developing a program all the way up the line. I know last weekend with middle school going to their first volleyball tournament in Joliet. I got a picture from Angie Courier, bright and early in the morning, of all the girls in their new uniforms that we offered last year. And they were all very happy to have new uniforms. They're excited about that. They've got their new net system in the, in the middle school that is also going to be really good for years to come. That's something that we should all be not hearing more by the time they need to replace that. So, it's, stuff is in really good shape. No, it's, we bought, we bought the best that we could get. So, hopefully, we've all grown up and have moved on to others. It should last well over a decade, put it that way. Tiffany, you'll probably still be.
We're keeping this a secret here.
Sorry. But, no.
The rest of you are old, is what you're saying.
But, yeah, and, and so, we're on good footing with that for, for years to come. The AAU program donated their tackle equipment to the middle school. So, we have more uniforms, more helmets, more shoulder pads, practice jerseys, and that sort of thing. So, we're in good standing there. For homecoming, once again, we're going to have a parade downtown, and we're excited about that. We are in the process of setting it. We're actually meeting with the cheer folks tomorrow, where we'll finalize the days and finalize everything that's going to happen with that. As I previously mentioned, the football team's off to a really good start. They're growing. I will just say, you know, it's, I, I see progress, and I see hope. And, and so, that's, that's a good thing. We're filling our position. We have interviews and interest coming in. One of my priorities in hiring new coaches and looking at people to fill our spots is not just bodies, but I want people that are here and are going to be here, because that's how you build a program. I'm looking for people that want to live in Colstrip, that want to coach in Colstrip, and that want to grow here, not just be one and done, or CS is a stepping stone to a better job. So, that's, that's kind of where we're coming from in our philosophy there. Who else? That is Jen. That's about all we got?
Mr. Rob, you're up.
Terri, thanks. As the, as everybody is talking, it was, and it's been good to reflect back on everything that's been going on and what's been happening in the district. And it's been really impressive. I'd have to say, you know, my main team, this team, these guys. And so, as I was listening, I was thinking about all I've done. I think we've had 17 hours together. Yeah, these guys, I think, and admin. And that's a lot for this time of year. I mean, it was impressive that last week, we had an admin meeting on Wednesday. We went three hours. We weren't done, we weren't quite done, and it wasn't me. It was somebody on the team that just said, "Let's get back together. Let's keep working." So, I said, "All right." So, we jumped in on Friday. We did three more hours. I think we thought it'd be about an hour. But what I'm finding is when we get together and collaborate, and what we're working on, the focus is to be consistent amongst buildings. So, it's not always the easiest thing or in the district to keep, to work on that and to change things and to progress and do what's best for our students and our staff. And one of them is safety. We talked about, and some of these are in the works, so not all finished, but I'm going to update you on what we've been discussing. Because this is really, it seems like, where the majority of my work has been. There's lots of other things too, little things, whatever creep up, of course. But safety drills, we talked about having the same base, same type. People want to be consistent, talk to each other, be planning, send the same messages, and be planning and helping and do the things in the buildings that should be done, same procedures and protocols. Worked quite a bit on lead requests. We worked on, when it comes to extenuating circumstances because of the policy there and what we, what we have in the CBA that was extending a holiday, the five days before, after school, all of those things. So, we worked on process where, you know, they're denied because it says you're denied until you appeal to me, and they're going to go through principals too. So, we're all on the same page, and we're informed and then what my decision is on that. So, we'd be working more towards just some extreme, maybe, emergency situations that are kind of unavoidable. But right now, there's things that were already in place and that had been asked for maybe previously or just planned for before calendar and whatnot. So, trying to be, you know, understanding there too. But shortages of subs, and really, I think our, what I believe and what I believe we all are thinking is that we want, you know, our best people right there with their kids as much as possible. So, we had a look at that a little bit and discussed that. Rotating, oh, this was, this was kind of neat because, you know, we've been in this building, and that means some administrators have to come from the other buildings all the time. And so, we talked about how, what to do differently, and we weren't exactly sure. I was thinking maybe just a different location one time in this building too, because the sewing room over here gets, gets taken up. And when we talked about, we want to do what's best for kids and put kids first, when that came to my attention, we started brainstorming, and I started thinking about a lot what we could do. So, you know, we'll be vacating that for the, the conference upstairs. We had two admin meetings already at the middle school, the continuation one last week, which, by the way, I really liked that room. I kept saying that. It's bright, it's cheery, and it was pretty neat to be over there. And then we'll be over at the, at the elementary school. And Bart was working on a place and a location for that. He was a little bit more crammed for space. And we are advertising for a kindergarten teacher. So, we did discuss that too. So, that's, that's, yay, we cheer you up. So, might be calling people, you know. I think word of mouth is a biggie when we're getting some of our subs and that, that I've heard good things about. So, we've been recruiting people that way too. And then sending a district-wide positive message. So, we've had some ideas that came from our, our first day speaker, Tara Brown, called the Connection Coach. And one thing was find the good and praise it every day. So, we wanted to do that. People buy into the leader, she said, before they buy into the vision. So, setting that example for them and be a positive. And that's what we're trying to do in our admin meetings too. We set norms right away. And so, we talked about coming with solutions and becoming problems, and just, we dealt, dealt a lot on how we treat each other, how we talk, and just, just the respect that we have and how we're going to do business there. So, and I repeat them every admin meeting, and sometimes in a little different way, sometimes a little more fun than others. But, you know, try to be a little creative with those. And then, what do you want your leadership footprint to be is another question she asked of, not just us, of course. She was talking to the whole, the whole staff. So, those are some things that are first and foremost. And one of them is kind of this motto too that we're, we're looking at and have decided on exactly what we want to have it be. On seclusion restraint training, we spent quite a bit of time on that, just realizing safety is a big issue. So, kind of the drills too. And then how, how are we going to go about exactly getting people trained and which program we're going to use? Jen's been kind of heading these things up and talked to me a little bit about that, proposed another program, one that I've actually used. Indian education for all week. We decided last week to do a little bit of changing. We're going to have a committee help us with that. We're going to sprinkle things throughout that month. And then we discussed, looking at the 30th of being a day of assemblies, a day of events where traditions, cultural things are explained and examples given and shown so that people are learning, not just seeing something happen about, you know, what it is, but why it is to, and what's the purpose behind that to better understand that culture that we have right here with us. So, we worked together in a special, a special meeting on map testing because we don't have a curriculum director right now. So, one thing that's happened too is this group has been extremely willing to share the wealth and do what they need to do in their buildings and work together, work with the principals. And I have set this up and included some training that you heard, now that testing taking place and training happened. So, those guys jumped on board. I mean, they pushed me. It's like, we got to get this done, Scott. I mean, this is, this is needed. So, then we had a meeting right away and then decided how that would all get done and get into place. So, I think then begin, we did have to have a state testing coordinator named, and there was people that had some really good input and decided, you know, even though I said, "I'll volunteer", they're like, "No, no, no. There's too much, and you don't know enough yet." So, anyway, Katie knows you had experience. Yeah, they're, they're not afraid. We're, we're getting pretty open, as you can tell. We're comfortable with each other, so. And, and I like it that way. So, and you told no in a nice way. But anyway, so, they were thinking of me. Katie knows you picked it up, and in less than a week had begun planning, and then our reported back to the admin team. She came and presented to us what was happening. Homecoming again, you heard that the, the theme days are going to be common, and there are going to be ones that can be done in, in both middle school, high school. Elementary, I wasn't sure. I forget. Yes.
We'll do the dress-up days.
Yeah, Robin made sure that as those are planned, she had that in mind, that they'd be fun things for everybody, appropriate to all buildings. So, that was some good planning back there already by her. And then we did, we joined the Montana Curriculum Consortium. Bart and I had checked into another one too somewhat, and he was familiar with it.